I'd like to call this June 27, 2024 Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Onagostu, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Mikko?
Here.
Ms. Stavcek?
Here.
Mrs. Howson?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the beginning of every meeting, we like to remind ourselves of our strategic priorities. We are currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. All our decisions are made in accordance with this strategic plan. We do have a few agenda changes, and we have additions to Human Resources Section L, which we will get to when we get to Section L. And next is recognitions, and we'll start with OSBA Student Achievement.
We don't have anything this week, this month.
We are incredibly efficient today.
(laughing)
And we would like to tell all the students to have a happy summer and get ready for the next school year. Dr. Raiba.
Thank you, Mr. Mikko. It's been an exciting few months here. We've had the opportunity to recognize a variety of students that have excelled academically, athletically, or in the arts, and so tonight we keep that going, as well as some staff recognitions. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Danielle Blackman, our middle school girls' head track coach, to recognize some of our outstanding track and field athletes based on their results this past season.
All right, so the girls, the girls' 7th and 8th grade, it's a combined team, track and field, they had an undefeated season. Both in our dual meets, and every Invitational that we went to, they took first place, which to me is beyond incredible. The Avon Invite had over 20 teams. They took first. And I'm going to brag, I normally don't, but not only did they take first by a little, or not only did they take first, but they took first by a lot. And that was what happened in every Invitational. This group of girls is a special group of girls. Our 8th graders really took the 7th graders under their wings, and they had a goal. They wanted to do well all season, and I think that's a lot. Our track season is very short, and the bond that these girls had, and they're not even all here, is unbelievable. Sometimes there's a divide, but you would have never guessed that they were only competing for three, four months. Even the parents had a special bond too. You were always able to see the little Strongsville parent crowd out there cheering on every athlete. So that's just a little bit about our season. But a couple thank-yous that I wanted to say. I always like to give a shout-out to Coach Koval at the high school because without him, he is just a track and field guy, and he's very passionate. And he would have never found these invites that we went to that would allow the girls to qualify for the state meet. The maintenance crew, who always had our stadium ready to go. Jason Kepler, our assistant athletic director, he was always helping out. So those are a couple thank-yous. And of course, Dean in the Technology Department, I have to give him a shout-out. We had some batons made for them, and I'll show those in a little bit. But he had those made the next day that we needed. So just some special things that happened. At the Avon Invitational, these girls held the Avon, hold the Avon meet record in both the 4x1 relay, the 4x2 relay. Long jump also holds the record. And with this record, these girls were able to qualify for the state meet. And as we were getting ready to go to the state meet, there was a little bump in the road, and we were actually able to not go to the state meet due to some computer issues. We had a whole team that tried to do what we could do. It was probably the saddest day. It was the happiest day for a little bit. I was at my daughter's field trip, and then I get a text message from Mr. Kepler, and we took action right away. We actually knew the night before, took action. Dr. Raiba tried to help us. Everybody tried to put their hands in, and unfortunately, the results were us not going on Saturday. And in my opinion, I think there's always a reason for everything. So whether it would have been, you know, I know these girls were passionate about taking first. I think they would have taken first, but you never know what happens, and you never know what the outcome is. So something, for some reason, it held us back. But I know that every single one of these girls will be back here within the next four years with the high school coach recognizing them because this 4x1 relay team and this 4x2 relay team, they are split, so we will find some people, Sammy and Daddy, to help you out next year. But that, when they are together up at the high school, they are going to be something else. And that's four years of practice and training together where they only had two months that they trained together. And a lot of the times, it was just meets. So I have a little gift for you guys. So the girls that qualified for the state meet, the 4x1 team actually holds the middle school record and the Avon Invite record with a time of 52.19 seconds. And we got these engraved in Makerspace for each athlete to take home. And then the girls 4x2 holds a record of 148, so that is also on the batons. And then for the girls who did not get the opportunity, well, every girl's getting a thanks-to-Booster, Strongsville Boosters. Every girl, we got a state qualifying T-shirt made up, so they have something to remember. And only a couple people know what I put on the back. So you can blame me if you don't like it. But for the girls that were not able to go because OSHA did not allow us to go, on the back, I have the year OSHA was afraid of us cooking in Columbus. (laughing) So these girls, every time they got off the track, their phrase was, "We just, we were cooking. We were just cooking," right? They even got Coach Klutzer a... What did you guys think of that? An apron. That says, "I'm always cooking" on the apron, and they made that in Makerspace, too. So I know we don't have awards and everything from the state meet, but I know what you guys did is you're dedicated, and that I think T-shirts are better than that. So we have here Reagan.
Congratulations.
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 Very proud of you.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
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 Well, congratulations.
Very proud of you.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Keep it up.
Congratulations.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Keep it up.
Congratulations.
We're very proud of you.
And then just one more. Kayden Mobley was one of the boys that qualified. He did go down and run in the Open 400, so we also are recognizing him. He was supposed to be here tonight, but he ended up going to overnight camp for the week instead. So congratulations to Kayden.
We're going to do a picture with you, so the parents can get a picture. Danielle.
Coach, before you run away, I wasn't sure, and I forgot, how many times did they lose?
Zero.
How many times again?
Zero.
No, I'm sure their parents agree with me. That means they were perfect, whether the OHSAA recognizes it or not. But we recognize it, and we appreciate all their hard work, and we appreciate the fact that younger Mustangs are now going to set their sights to be perfect also. So congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I mean, we would like to take credit that it was all coaching, but I do believe there was a little natural talent that came out of it. And I want to thank the parents for, I mean, AP just got off the flight from, where'd you come from? Like Denver or Seattle? So these parents are always shuffling their kids around from different soccer events and everything just to make sure that they could be at all these Invitationals. So without you parents, your kids would have never had this experience, and this is probably one of the top memories that I will have for coaching track, so thank you.
As Mr. Mikko said, congratulations on a phenomenal season and what you did on the field and off the field, and we look forward to all that you'll accomplish going forward. So continuing on with our recognitions, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Burdick to share one of the highlights of the year, which is celebrating our Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, Dr. Raiba. Dr. Raiba, Mrs. Pelco, members of the school board, it's a privilege to be in up here once again. It's hard to imagine we're on our eighth year of doing this award. You know, in the past, I've quoted some very famous people. I've quoted Pope Francis, Lou Brown from the movie Major League. And tonight, it's going to be a little different. It comes from, if anybody remembers, American Top 40, and Casey Kasem saying at the end, "Reach for the stars." And tonight, we're going to talk about one of the stars of the Strongsville school system. So with further ado, as Casey would say, reach for the, as I said, reach for the stars. So we go, "Dear Knights of Columbus, it's an honor to nominate this person as our Teacher of the Year. She's dedicated, committed to the growth of each student. The student experience is relevant, engaging, and creative. The time is not a factor when it comes to resources and material to help a student. The students and the parents just love and adore her. Her nomination pushes herself to do bigger and better things for her student, and her attitude is contagious. But most of all, she shows her love about teaching every day." So on behalf of the Strongsville Council, the Knights of Columbus, we want to recognize Ms. Elise Bialaski.
I hope I said her right. Bielaski.
Bielaski, sorry. I'm married to a Kaczynski, and I said it wrong. (laughing) We want to recognize her with the 2024 Strongsville Teacher of the Year. So on behalf of the Knights, we want to thank you, and we'll see you again next year.
I just want to say a little, oh, I'm a little short. Can you hear me now? Okay, I just want to say a little something. It is such a high honor to stand here today as Teacher of the Year. It takes collaboration amongst many to make magic happen, so I wanted to make sure I said a few thank-yous to some really important people. I first want to say thank you to the Knights of Columbus for creating this opportunity and award for teachers. It truly means more to us than you know. I also want to thank Amy, who has pushed me to be a better educator. You've inspired me to do more and to continue to learn more. I wouldn't be able to truly embody the Model Mustang competencies of being resilient, collaborative, innovative, empowered, and global if I did not have the support of Cameron and Jenny, Sirar staff and families, the Board of Education, and the community as a whole. I feel very grateful to be surrounded by people who support the innovation and risk-taking that it takes in order to provide the best for our students, which our students really deserve. I also want to say thank you to my little party over here, my family and friends, who are here today supporting me, and those who couldn't make it today. I couldn't be the teacher and the person I am without all of your guys' support and love. I just want to say I truly love my job, my students, and this district so much, and I will forever cherish this award.
You know, Bill, I loved your quote that you just shared. Elise, when you go home, ask your family who Casey Kasem is, if they can explain that to you.
Yeah.
But we're blessed here to have phenomenal teachers and staff and administrators, and every once in a while, we catch a rising star. And you truly have been a rising star and have done phenomenal work, not only for your kids, but inspiring those around you as they've inspired you. So well-deserved recognition, congratulations, and we're better off because you're a part of our district. So thank you for being here.
Next on our agenda is public comment. I don't have any slips. Does anybody have any public comment? Hearing none, we have one more ceremonial thing we're going to take out of order, but Mrs. Pelco, you have some announcements, I believe.
I do, I do. So later on in the agenda, under Human Resources, we have a few administrative appointments for your consideration. But first, before we get to that, I would like to introduce some of them who are in the audience this evening. So first, I do want to recognize our new Director of Secondary Education, Mrs. Nicole Hackman, who is on the agenda. She couldn't be here tonight. She bought tickets for a concert like six months ago, so I said, "Yes, you can do that." So we'll have her at another board meeting and formally introduce her, but wanted to say congratulations to her. Next, we have a new Human Resources Coordinator. Mr. Ryan Kilbane will be joining us as the new HR Coordinator. Ryan comes to us from the business sector with vast experience in human resource management, working for Derisse Incorporated and Pat Catan's for many years. Most recently, Ryan owns his own company and has been working with other leaders and employees through that. I'm really excited for Ryan to become our first employee in this new position for our district. He has experience in onboarding, recruiting, and is extremely personable, which I think will serve him very well as he gets to know our staff, and the knowledge of HR processes and law as well will certainly help me out. So I'm thrilled to announce Ryan, and Ryan, if you want to come to the podium and say a few things, you're welcome.
Good evening. I just have a couple of things to say. If you would have told me back in May of 1995, as I graduated Strongsville High School, that I would be standing in front of you all tonight, I never would have believed it. And now saying that, if you would have told any of my teachers from 1995 that I would be standing in front of you all tonight, they certainly wouldn't have believed it, and yet, here I am. I would like to thank Dr. Raiba, Mrs. Pelco, and George for selecting me for this incredible opportunity. It has been a pleasure getting to know the three of you during this process. They are personable, passionate, enthusiastic, and driven to make Strongsville City Schools as best as possible, and I'm excited to join that kind of team. I want to thank the school board. I'm really humbled by the confidence you have in me. I very much look forward to getting to know all of you and being as helpful as I possibly can be moving forward. Finally, I will approach every day on the job with great humility, enthusiasm, and respect for all of my coworkers throughout the district. I look forward to celebrating every success and facing every challenge together. Thank you again for this great opportunity. I'm very proud and blessed to be coming home. Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Monica Cooney. Monica will be replacing Sam Lawrence as our new Assistant Principal at both Maraski and Kinzner Elementary Schools. Monica has previously served the district as a kindergarten teacher, and most recently is one of our elementary literacy coaches. Monica's leadership over the last few years has really prepared her for this position. She has worked closely with both our district team and our elementary teaching staff, and not only literacy strategies, but overall enhancing the student experience and making it better for all kids. So just thrilled to have Monica on board. Monica, you want to come up?
Good evening. I am deeply honored and very grateful for the opportunity to serve as an elementary assistant principal in the same district that nurtured my own educational journey. As a former student of Strongsville City Schools and a now educator here, I am committed to fostering an environment where every student thrives academically and personally and really reaches their fullest potential. So thank you for entrusting me with this very important role.
And finally, I'd like to introduce to everyone Mr. John Taloney, who will be recommended as our new middle school principal. John comes to us from Wellington, where he served for three years as the principal of McCormick Middle School that supports students in grades 4 through 8. Prior to that, he was the Associate Principal at Claggett Middle School in Medina for five years. Prior to going into administration, John was a social studies teacher at Jackson Local Schools for 7th and 8th grade students for about 11 years, if I calculated right. John is an honest and upfront leader who prides himself on collaboration, coaching, and teamwork. He's a strategic leader that's able to develop both short and long-range plans for improvement in collaboration with both staff and parents. And in his previous role, he's actually reduced student discipline. He's improved academic performance based on the state report card results, all while improving the school culture. So we're thrilled to announce John as our new middle school principal. And I'm sure you'll have some children following you up. He has his six kids here and his wife. So John, if you want to approach the podium?
Yes, thank you very much, Board of Education, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to, again, really thank you very much for having me here. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm very humbled. I got the call yesterday, and I'm still kind of on cloud nine. I'm very excited to go about our business at middle school. I did start my career at Jackson, and if you know anything about Jackson, Jackson is the school of excellence. And so when I was there as a student, and I was there as a teacher for 11 years, I've always had Strongsville as a district of excellence. It's something that when I've moved to this area, it's a district that I always had a zero on and was always looking for opportunity to be a part of. So I'm looking to, as I go forward, to continue that excellence, make this into a premier district, a premier school. That is my goal, and I look forward to meeting with the teachers here soon. I'm at one, and some of our kids, so nice to meet you. But I'm really looking forward to getting started and getting on the, I still have a couple weeks left at Wellington, but I'm looking to get forward here at the middle school, and I'm looking forward to everything. So thank you so much, and I will see you around.
So I want to welcome all our new employees. We're all very excited. We're all very excited for the upcoming school year, and one of the reasons is because of you. So welcome aboard, and we're looking forward to the next school year. I'm going to take a little bit of privilege and go slightly out of order. Instead of talking about renewal levy first, let's talk athletic booster sponsorship.
Do you want to do approval of minutes?
No, I want to do the locker rooms.
Gotcha.
Then we'll let them all leave. Patience. So we can come back to approval of minutes. So be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the Strongsville Athletic Boosters Donation Agreement as listed in the exhibit. This is a type action, so I need a motion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? I'll lead it off. The Athletic Boosters and Strongsville City Schools are entering into an agreement. Time is or was of the essence, but we made sure to go through everything to benefit our students, and it is a football locker room agreement. There is a naming rights that are part of the agreement, but I just wanted to publicly thank the Strongsville Athletic Boosters. This will be in addition to or above $65,000 donation that will remodel our football locker rooms for our students. So I'm very excited about that, and I wanted to publicly thank everyone for doing that. We'll be ready, Mr. Schultz, will we be ready by the football season?
Yes, sir.
So that's part of the excitement and part of the reason we played hurry-up. But our lawyers vetted everything. The board has had a chance to look at the contract. It is complete, and it is good for the district. It will allow me to piggyback on comments about the levy discussion, but this is an example of our community coming together for the betterment, not just of the school district, but for the students, for the student athletes in the school district. So unless there were any other comments, I just wanted to publicly thank the Athletic Boosters again for this. This is a very nice thing to do, but it also will benefit our students tremendously. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, please take the role.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much. At this point, it would be appropriate to take a slight pause if anyone has homework or anything else that they need to do. Now would be a good time to escape. Okay, next on our agenda is approval of minutes. Motion. Never get this right. It is on the consent calendar, so I don't need a motion. But we will be approving the minutes of the June 13, 2024 work session. All district video and audio recordings will be a permanent part of the minutes. Next is Board of Education other, and we have the topic of our renewal levy discussion. I will open the floor by sharing with you something that I read recently. George shared it with me. It comes from our Auditor of State, Keith Faber, and it comes under the heading of "Unsustainable Spending Decisions Undermine Public Education." And it specifically has a quote from the auditor. "The 'by now, worry about paying for it later' mentality is not uncommon, but it can be disastrous. When districts overspend and can't pay the bills, it's the students who suffer." And that really meant a lot to me as we consider what as a board and what as a school district we want to do. Again, anybody who lives in Strongsville and has voted knows that we have a renewal levy that will expire, if not renewed, by the end of this year. The approximate $10 million that that levy generates, if not renewed or something is done, will no longer be part of our revenue. And so it goes almost in a reverse way to what Auditor of State Keith Faber is talking about, and that worry about paying for it later. And so I think that really encapsulates what we need to discuss as a board. Do we have good financial planning? Do we take a look at what our expenses are, not just today, but our expenses are going into the future? And do we plan for that? Or do we have more of a paycheck-to-paycheck type attitude? I've been on the school board long enough. I remember those paycheck-to-paycheck times. They weren't attitudes. Nobody in the school district wanted to live paycheck-to-paycheck. It was just the facts of the matter. We were living paycheck-to-paycheck. In fact, we were spending beyond what our paycheck was bringing in. And that was not a far, that was not a long time ago. That was 10, 15 years. 15 years ago. And we were taking, and I'm fond of reminding the community and reminding myself, we were taking payday loans just to make payroll. And so we did a lot of work to educate the public. And five years ago, we felt that they understood our commitment to our students. And they renewed, they passed for the first time the levy that we're talking about now. It was, it was passed as a five-year renewal levy. It was not passed as a continuing levy. And so the reason we're talking about it is because it has failed twice. And so the question before the board is, is what should we do next? Should we rinse, wash, and repeat and put it up again? And have the same conversations over again, which I think there is some merit to that conversation? However, at the end of the day, it has failed twice. And to simply do the same thing over again, hoping for a different result is someone's definition of insanity. And so I don't, as an individual board member, I don't think we can just say, let's put up another levy, let's put this levy question back to the public in the same fashion. We've all spent so much time and energy trying to educate and explain our position to the community. And for whatever reason, it hasn't resonated. So I think it's incumbent on us to look at what our options are, consider the pluses and minuses of things that we have heard from the community, and then come to consensus on a decision forward. And so the first thing that I want to discuss, and we started the discussion at our last meeting, was whether it should be a renewal or a continuing levy. So the benefit of the renewal is that it's for a, from a voting perspective, every five years or 10 years or whatever that term is, the voters get a chance to recommit, to redecide, has the school district earned their investment? The downside from the school district is, is every five years, we have to do this. And the pragmatic answer, the pragmatic result so far is that we have, we have paid $30,000 to $40,000 each election to ask the community for their investment in our schools. To continue to do that, I don't think is wise. To continue to do that, I don't think is reasonable. At the end of the day, whatever we decide, if we choose to go to the ballot a third time, we will spend over $100,000 in fees to the county for the exercise. And just being plain, I want that $100,000 to stay with the district for the benefit of our students. So I'm going to suggest, and I'm going to ask for consensus, that we change the next, the next time we go on the ballot and change it to a continuing levy. For those paying attention to history, we had that conversation over five years ago. And the community said, we don't want a continuing levy. And so we changed it. And the one that we're discussing now, we converted to a five-year levy that the, that the community supported. So somebody who is paying attention, I would expect them to ask, what gives? Why are you changing? And my response will be, one is pragmatic, one is to have this conversation at a cost of $100,000 doesn't make any more sense. But the other part that I've thought about for a long time is that we are unique in Northeast Ohio, or perhaps unique in the, in the state, that we have two renewable levies on our books. And so every two to three years, we have this conversation with our taxpayers. And I think it's reasonable, and I think we can have the conversation, that having one renewable levy on our, on our books is a sufficient balance between us knowing that we have, we have money that we can budget with, but also allowing the taxpaying voter to continue to have that conversation, that purchaser's conversation, no different than when you go to a restaurant. Every time you go to the restaurant, you choose whether you're going to go to this restaurant or a different one or stay home. And so I think having a renewable levy once every five years is reasonable enough. And again, having two renewable levies just means we are spending a lot of energy having this conversation repeatedly. And again, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, that the conversation's going to change from our perspective. From the school district's perspective, we're going to have the exact same conversation or similar conversations we've had before. But it has a cost. It has a cost in, in just pure dollars, but it also has a cost in energy and time that I think all of us want to use to focus on the education that we're delivering for our students. So that was the first part that I think we need to consider. The second part is the millage. There, there is vocal, as we all know, opposition to the levy as it is. And so to simply put it back up at the same millage level, I think we just have to listen to, to some of the message that we're receiving. And so I do think we need to look at adjusting the amount. And I'm going to recommend that we lower it by a mil. It is not, that is not what the vocal opposition has said they want. At the end of the day, we also have to look at our income. We have to look at our budget. There's been a lot of discussion about the five-year forecast and whether it's a good tool or a bad tool. Is the tool we have, is a reasonable enough tool to make guiding decisions. And based on that tool that we've reviewed before, not renewing the levy is unsustainable. To simply forego that amount of money, $10 million, is unsustainable. And to do a half levy is unsustainable. It's just a matter of how quickly is it unsustainable? But at the end of the day, school district finances, we are in a position that we are spending more money in expenses than money that we're bringing in. And so to bring it down that drastically, half, just means that we would be having this conversation in a few years to increase the amount. And so just the same way, we all budget our money, whether it be a vacation that we're planning for, or whether it be retirement or college education in our homes, it is much easier to save an amount of money every year than it is to just pay that amount in one fell swoop. And so the idea of cutting it in half or cut, or thoroughly foregoing it is not something that we can do, especially when you have the advice of, of our own auditor of state saying that buy it now and worry about it later is not a sustainable principle. So I'm recommending 4.9 mils. I want to be clear, that, that one mil does address it. It does mean that eventually we are going to come back to the community sooner than if 5.9 mils was passed. But it's a, I think it's a reasonable amount. I think it does respond to some in our community that are saying it needs to be lower. And at the end of the day, there is no perfect world. Some of the headwinds that I look at in Columbus, there's a fair funding formula that has not been committed to. It is everything that we as a district want, but it, it is not guaranteed. There is all of the different headwinds about inflation and everything else in the economy. And so it's just another example of why I think it makes sense to be cautious and to make sure that if we reduce it, we don't reduce it so drastically that we're now in a position like the school district auditor Faber was talking about, that they're in fiscal emergency and they don't know what to do. This is a safe, balanced approach. I think it's a reasonable approach. So that's what I'm going to suggest that as a board we consider. On the one hand, we'll make it, we'll ask the voters to invest in us and make it continuing, but we'll also reduce it by one mil. It would be a 4.9 mil. When is the second levy or the second ballot, is it two years, the second renewable levy? It's in two years.
Yeah, it's in two, I have it right here. First year we can be on the ballot is November of 2026.
So we're having a conversation now in 2024. We hope to be successful in 2024. But in the back of your head, if there are any cynical voters out there, we're going to have this conversation again in two years. So I would suggest, instead of looking so much at the levy amount and the dollars, look at how we're spending the money. That goes to exactly what auditor Faber's talking about. If you buy now and pay for it later, the, this board, this administration vets every purchase and doesn't vet it just, do I have enough money in the bank, but vets it to say, is it sustainable? Is it, is it the right decision for our students? But it is also something that's balanced, not just today, but in the next five years and the next 10 years. So in a way, I'm saying, you know, invest in us. And if you think it's a risk, in the back of your head, you know, you know you're going to have this conversation again in two years. So I have monopolized my time. Is there anybody else who has any comments?
Rich, I just want to add, you know, like you said, it costs the district 100, almost $100,000. We also have a group of volunteers who are working in a PAC to help us to get this renewal levy passed. And I know this past time, I think they invested, fundraised almost $60,000. And those are, you know, private groups in our community that could be doing so much more with that money for our students, for our community. And, you know, it's a cost that's just more, you know, it's more than just us. So I just wanted to add that.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm glad you invited the cynic to the party. So let's, George, if we, let's say we put this new levy on as proposed and it fails again, how many more, like, can we put that same thing on how many more times? Or does that change because it's not a renewal?
So if we put this on, we're, we're, it would be a new levy. So the renewal levy would expire anyways. So at that point, the renewal levy expires. So the renewal is gone. And then you can put a, a new levy on as many times.
So there's no limit then?
Correct. But what would happen is if it, if it fails in November, so there's no limit, but there'll be a gap. If this renewal, if, if this renewal levy expires this calendar year, and there's not one to replace it in November, there will be not a levy for this current tax year. So the tax, the collection year always lags behind the tax year. So the current renewal levy we're collecting on based last calendar year. So once that expires, if one would pass in November, it'd be for this tax year, next year's collection year. If it fails in November, then we go back on, the next election would be May, assuming, let's just say for scenario purposes, it fails in November, and then it passes in May, we wouldn't collect on it until the following calendar year. So we would have one calendar year that would have a break in collections.
Thank you. And I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that, you know, none of us wants that to happen, but we also have failed to renewals that are similar into what we're going to ask again. Should we advance to May to 2025? Those conversations about levies will be less than 18 months apart. And I think it just, another point of, we can't sustain this pace.
And I, I would suggest, and there'll be, I will have more to say, I think as a board will have more to say. If it fails in November, I don't see myself or the board supporting just constantly putting this up. If it fails in November, we're, as a board, we're going to have to seriously consider what the, what the community is telling us and what our response as a board is, is in the sense that I think if it fails in November, that's three noes at that point. And you know what? We're going to be positive. It hasn't failed yet. We're gonna, ultimately, I've said this before, I was going to save this for next speeches, but every, every tax that I have to approve, I have a three-part test. Is it needed? Is it reasonable? And can I look every neighbor and taxpayer in the eye and promise and say with authority that we won't waste your money? And that's true every single time. That'll be true this time. It'll be true any other time. But I think that's where we should prioritize. It is needed. It is reasonable. And we can look everyone in the eye and say, we won't waste your money. Unless there's any other discussion, George, if you can prepare language for continuing three, or 4.9 mils.
Okay. We'll have it up for the next meeting.
Thank you. So as a reminder to the public, at our, not our next board meeting, at our next, we have a retreat in July, the second board meeting after that, we will be having the first vote to put this question to the ballot. We have to have two votes. So the next one will be two board meetings from now and-
No, the next one's July.
No, the first vote would be July 9.
At our retreat.
No, that's not the retreat.
No, at the next board meeting. We have a board meeting before the retreat.
Ah, I should look at the calendar. Our next vote will be July 9. That will be the first vote that we will have to determine to put this issue to the ballot. And then our second vote will be-
August 1.
August 1. And then George will run down to the county and get it on the ballot.
And then, since you brought up the resolutions, the first resolution needs three affirmative votes in order for it to pass. The second resolution needs four affirmative votes.
Okay. Next on our agenda, next on our agenda is the athletic booster sponsorship agreement. So I'm just going to take the opportunity to thank them again. And we're looking forward to the new football locker rooms. Next on our agenda is treasurer's report. Mr. Onagostu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have quite a bit for your consideration tonight. A lot of it is due to the fiscal year close and open for next fiscal year. Just as our fiscal year, it kind of mimics the school year. Our fiscal year end is June 30. We close on fiscal year 2024 and our new fiscal year opens July 1. It will be fiscal year 25. In what, with part of the fiscal year closed, we have to have final resolutions approved by the board and submitted to the county. So that's, those are the series that we'll have on the agenda tonight. But the first is the, item G1 is the financial report for the month ending May 31. Attached is the board monthly report and the supplemental report. I'm not going to go over it at this time due to, now that we have final numbers for June, those have slightly changed. I'll have a updated report most likely in the August meeting for June 30 for the current fiscal year. Item G2, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following Strongsville Education Foundation grants for transportation expenses for elementary school and seventh grade field trip expense, expenses, oh, fill, let me back up. Seventh grade field trips and expenses for the early learning preschool in-house field trip for fiscal year 24 be approved for the total amount of $19,690.25. As you recall, several years ago, we brought back the field trips with the SEF sponsoring the transportation with those costs. Item G3 is another SEF grant, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following grant from the Strongsville Education Foundation be approved for fiscal year 25. It's for NCTM conference. It's for a math conference to send to teachers. Item four, it's fiscal year end transfers and advances. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the transfer of funds and advances be approved as listed. And to quickly go over them, these are annual transfers. The first is our 009 accounts for consumable supplies. This is the difference of what it costs versus what we collect. And the difference could be is still students owing fees and other students that are either free and reduced lunch that don't pay school fees. The transfer to 009 fund from the general fund is $62,000 for summer school rotary fund. We've added additional summer school needs. It's more than the tuition that we bring in. The transfer to cover that deficit is $20,699. Termination Benefits Fund, this is an annual transfer. This year, the amount is $568,506. The purpose of this fund is to account for the severance payments when employee separates in the O35 fund versus the general fund, so it's not counted against the district's cost per pupil account. in the O35 fund versus the general fund, so it's not counted against the district's cost per pupil account. The only source of revenue is the transfer from the general fund. And then lastly, a transfer of $135,901 is needed to cover the difference within the high school, middle school athletics. The next series of transfer is the, the turf transfers from when we brought on the turf from the, the, when we converted Pecatane Stadium to a turf field. The first is the annual savings of $35,000. That goes to the turf fund, that goes to the replacement. And then also, as part of one of the sponsorship deals with Southwest, they had reduced their trainer fee to cover part of the turf. So that difference goes into that fund as well. The next series of transfers is a closeout of two student activity accounts, going back to the principal's 018 account. First is the Leadership Academy Student Activities Fund at the high school for $6,223.73. And then another one is an Athletic Programs Student Activity Fund that the athletic director had to do some fundraising to benefit all athletic programs. But he's now been using his regular account to do that. There's 10 cents left in that account. So to bring those, to close out those dormant student activity accounts. And then the last is advances. Advances are for, for mostly the state and federal grants, they're reimbursable grants. And what that means is we have to spend them first and then seek reimbursement from the state the following month. So June, June with the fiscal year always kind of creates a negative because we have the expense in June and we can't submit it in July. These funds can add negatives. So the general fund has to advance the dollars to cover the negatives. And then once we receive the funds back, typically after we do what's called a final expenditure report to close out these fiscal year grants for the state, we'll receive the final dollars back in around October, November. And then at that time, we'll advance it back to the general fund through board resolution to, to make the general fund whole again. Any questions on transfers and advances?
I have no questions, but I will, I won't lose the opportunity to remind people that everybody, every penny counts because we count every penny, even if it's only 10. George counts them and accounts for them.
Number five, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the amended permanent appropriations for fiscal year 24 be approved as listed in the exhibit. And as you list, as you look in the exhibit, you'll see several decreases. And what that is, is there's three tests that we have to have for the end of the year for budgetary compliance and that appropriations must match the financial system and that are, and also much to match what's be approved. Appropriations cannot exceed beginning cash plus estimated revenues. And then also appropriations cannot exceed beginning cash plus actual revenues. So what this does and the, and the ones that is reducing is reducing those to match the revenues to expenditures plus beginning cash. Item G6, approval of new funds for fiscal year 25. Mostly it's the grants, each grant, although we receive the same grants every year. Each grant has its own grant number for the grant year. So it's tracked. So it's creating the fiscal year 25 grant accounts. And then also, student activities account, 9958 for the high school class of 2028, the incoming freshman class. And me and Michelle each have a student in that class.
It felt so real.
Right. Item seven, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the proposed budgets for fiscal year 25 be approved as listed. These are for the student activity programs, uniform school supplies, public school support, which is the principal's 018 account, the internal rotary funds, which is the 014 accounts, and the local grants be, which is Fund 19. Proposed budgets for fiscal year 25 be approved. Item G8 is the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 25. We begin the year with the temporary appropriations as we're still finalized staffing and contracts throughout the year. We have until September 30th to pass an, an annual appropriation. What I like to do for the temporary appropriation, for the general fund for salaries and benefits, make it 50% of the actual cost of what we know now. The non-salary items are 100% of what we have planned. Really what should change between now and August, or now and September is the staffing numbers. We'll have more concrete. We're, as hiring concludes, where they fall in the salary schedule, what benefits packages are taken. So we'll have more actual numbers than any shifts of employees as well. The contracts, purchase services, we might have slight changes as we're still getting the contracts in for next year. But mostly it'll be the salary and benefits. And then all other funds should be the, they're at 100% and not seeing a significant change there in September. The one thing I do want to point out with the temporary appropriations, with an appropriation measure, I'm just going to pull it up. There's always a certificate, amended certificate of resources that comes from the county and it's, it talks about the resources that we have in order to spend those funds. It, it's our unencumbered beginning balance for the fiscal year. Revenues that, plus revenues that were estimated to receive for the year. So for total resources. So what the county, what the county did and talked about in a few meetings prior when we were doing the tax rate resolution, their, and their amended certificate that they sent to us, they're assuming that the, since the renewal hasn't passed yet, they're not counting the renewal levy in this certificate of estimated resources. If it passes in November, we'll do a new tax rate resolution at that time and this will be adjusted. But once we come back in September with an annual appropriation, there'll be about a $6 million gap between expenditures will exceed revenues by $6 million based on the certificate of estimated resources. Item G9 is the athletic ticket prices for next fiscal year. These are the actual tickets to get in the games, to qualify. We spoke today, we'll prove, we'll have this for your consideration tonight, but we might be coming back for an addendum in a couple of meetings. Mr. Binkley and Mr. Ziegler will be getting together to add the ticket prices for the online streaming. So we're going to have, we're going to add it to this document. That's an annual item and housed in one spot. And then lastly, this is a required vote. And this is the annual renewal of the Food Service Management Contract with Chartwells for next school year. So be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the contract between Strongsville City Schools and Compass Group USA by and through its Chartwells Division for Management of the District's Food Service Program be renewed effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Hearing done, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
And with that, there's no further questions. That concludes my report.
Any questions? Nice report, George.
Thanks.
Dr. Raiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. At this time, as he gets the remote or the clicker for the presentation, I'm going to ask Andy Trujillo to come to the podium and introduce our guest tonight that will be sharing a presentation with us on some services that are offered through Cleveland Clinic. So, Andy?
Good evening, members of the board. I'm very pleased to introduce to you this evening Dr. Molly Wimbiscus from the Cleveland Clinic and Michael Carr, Mental Health Navigator for the Lakewood Schools, also from the Cleveland Clinic. So why are we here tonight? We're here tonight to offer a great opportunity for our students. Dr. Wimbiscus has been a part of our district since about 2018, supporting our students through mostly, I think, through the Bridge Program. And then the most, past couple of years, I've gotten to know Michael through the Virtual Access Clinic that we've had in our district as well. So what we wanted to do is, you know, a couple of months ago, Mrs. Kilbane and I met with Dr. Wimbiscus and Michael to talk about how to evolve our partnership and provide more robust services and, and opportunities for our kids who may need mental health supports. And so we talked explicitly about what happens in Lakewood and how Michael supports this district, the Lakewood district and the kids there. And so we thought it would be a great opportunity to come here today and have them speak firsthand about, about the program and offer that as an opportunity for our kids. Okay? With that, I'm going to ask Molly to come on.
Thanks, Andy. Thank you so much for having us here and for this opportunity to share the information that we have. It's been wonderful working with Strongsville. We're excited to share what we do in Lakewood as an opportunity for this district. And we're very grateful for the chance to just share that with you. So I'm the, I'm the medical director of our school mental health program. Michael is our mental health navigator. He's been in the Lakewood district with us since 2019. Our program, the, the goal of our program is to best support students in the district with mental health challenges. Those may be transient, they may be chronic, they may be serious or severe. Children may be discharged from hospitals and not have a plan for reentry into the school and may be struggling academically and socially. And so our role is to work closely with our academic partners in a very cohesive fashion to best support kids who are having these type of challenges. One of the other pieces that's very important to mention is our more collaborative approach in supporting families. So a large part of the work is providing supports for parents who may also be struggling with how do I best support my child? Or how do I work with my district to support my child who has a mental health challenge? I want to share a quote with you from one of the Transition Bridge coordinators from the Rhea City School District. This is, the reason I want to share this is because the potency of what it means when you're in the space working with youth with mental health challenges and you know there are these amazing teachers and educators and administrators who are supporting them on the other end, but we don't have the chance to talk for many reasons, technical reasons, time reasons. We may not know who each other is or are. Our level of communication must equal our level of concern. So Scott Barber is a parent and a teacher with lived experience who is very passionate about making sure that healthcare providers coordinate with our educators because we are all in the same space supporting kids. So there's multiple parts to our school mental health program. I'm going to talk about it pretty quickly because I thought you would have some questions and many of you may already know the program. And I don't think we have a whole lot of time. So the first part is a school mental health patient navigator. So this is someone who is embedded in the district and kind of straddles the two spaces. So is working in healthcare, is a full-time employee with Cleveland Clinic, but also is based within the school district. So is working closely with administrators, special education department, guidance counselors, social workers, custodians, everybody who is touching a child. And then we have our Transition Bridge Program, which you know, it's transitioned more into a process where we support alongside our guidance counselors, sort of see one, do one, teach one. We help our partners in the educational world better support youth with mental health challenges. And over time, that may become part of the process where you may not need a healthcare partner alongside you, but you always have that as backup. We found that many of our school partners are uncomfortable with some of the severity of mental health challenges, but the kids are in school and need a lot of support. So knowing that you have a mental health professional that you can always call kind of gives you a more sense of confidence and ability to do this work. We also have a virtual access clinic where if there is a, this is really about sort of diversion from the emergency room. So if you have a child who has a crisis or a mental health challenge, and I'm sure you hear many of your administrators and teachers talking about this, who has an identified mental health challenge, is screened and may need to go to the emergency room, but may not necessarily meet criteria for admission and returns to school the next day. What do you do? How do you best support this child and this family? You're stuck in sort of this uncomfortable space and you may not have access to healthcare. So our virtual access clinic is there to best support kids who are in that space and work closely with schools so that we create sort of a network around the child during that time. Then we have our collaborative care. What that means is we're working closely with primary care partners. We think of ourselves as more agnostic in, in this space, meaning that we will partner with any healthcare provider within the geographic region we're serving. So we're working with UH and Metro and private practice or an FQHC to make sure that we are partnering to provide the best mental health services possible. So the school district. What we ask of the school district as we develop this program is leadership support. So we've, we've done work where if we don't have the direct support of leadership saying this is a program and we got to work together, it can fizzle out. We don't always get then the grassroots or the, the people on the ground saying that we are willing to do this type of work and collaborate and grow together. So what that means is we meet weekly with our educators to talk about complex cases. We have HIPAA, FERPA compliance, that's the, that's the educational law and the healthcare law for privacy to make sure it's okay for us to have those important discussions. And we talk about the cases and put our heads together to come up with the best interventions and supports possible to support a child from their healthcare perspective and from their educational perspective. So that's 30 minutes with maybe like the guidance counseling team and the social worker, maybe the intervention specialist comes in, and that's weekly. Then we have a quarterly large team meeting. So that might be 30 minutes every quarter with the most important players in the district and the health, in the organization. For our patient navigator, our mental health navigator, we need some area that's designated office space. I, in Lakewood, I have the most beautiful office. I love it, it's a closet. It was a converted closet and it is lovely. Then we have to sign our MOUs so we make sure that those are in place to do this kind of work. And then the district has a commitment to salary support. I don't want to talk about the administrative details. That's not exactly my, my space. But we, we can discuss finance and legal with the finance and legal teams. So this is a visual of what the mental health patient navigator is trying to link together. So we have our hospital system, our school district. And you can see in that, there probably is a thing, but the window on the right side is where our clinic sits. And then there's a back hallway and that's where like a little closet for our mental health offices are. Mental health can be pretty much anywhere. Okay, we're portable. This is a clinical care coordination meeting with healthcare staff and educators where we just get to sit and we talk 30 minutes a week. And that's the amount that matters. I don't know if you guys, you know, but when we're sitting in an office as, as physicians and we meet a child and we don't know, we hear that there's challenges in school, but we don't have direct access to the teacher or to the administrator, it can take weeks and weeks and paperwork to get those conversations. And sometimes kids don't have that time. And then we just really work closely with families and the community and do, do a lot of other sort of professional development work too. So, okay, this, this will be my last slide, then I'll turn over to Mike. But I think this illustrates some of the work and maybe gives you a taste of how things, some complications may occur. There's a problem at school, a child goes to the emergency room, then goes to the hospital. There may be coordination with the school counselor because the counselor may write a letter and say this child was reporting that they were suicidal. We're very concerned, we need this child evaluated in the emergency room. We're following our protocol. And the child may be discharged from the emergency room and they may go back to school and they could have transitional care, they could not. The goal is to have a reentry meeting post-hospitalization with your care team so the child and the family feel supported and the school is aware. Sometimes kids come back to school and the staff are not aware of why the child was absent. And that is a family's decision. But oftentimes, when we present the information in a different way, families are very grateful to have the coaching and the support to say, my child is, was very, very ill and he's, he's getting better, but we're going to need your support to get him there. In our program, we see a medical provider within 72 hours post-hospitalization. There's daily communication or weekly communication if that's what you need. Hopefully, there's no repeat emergency room visits and improved academic outcomes and otherwise. One of the pieces that I think is very important to, to sort of describe is if we can remove all that upper part and we're working closely and collaborative together and we don't necessarily need an emergency visit or hospitalization or a higher level of care, we can divert and we can have a closer, more cohesive intervention for kids and save a lot of time for them. Okay, so this is kind of the team. The people who are in the circles are the ones who we really closely work with across our two disciplines. All right. Well, sorry, one more thing to say. The harm reduction model is really important in healthcare. And one of the challenges with our work in schools is that we don't always have warm handoffs. So that's what this model represents. And when we train our doctors, we talk frequent, and your hospital could be shut down if you are not providing- and your hospital could be shut down if you are not providing this type of care coordination where you are coming from the ICU, back to the floor, about to that patient. You have to make sure that you have good communication and care coordination. So this is what this model represents in healthcare. But I think it relates to schools, too, because we're making sure we care coordinate, okay? All right, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So I want to talk, I'm going to talk a little bit on the slides, and then I'm going to just talk a little bit and then switch it over to questions. A lot of the work that we do, if you look at, this is the MTSL, Multi-Tierred System of Support. What you see here is the top 5%, those are the students that are having the greatest struggle. And we spend a lot of time working with them. We, what I would say is that we work collaboratively in that Tier Two with the school district, and then we support Tier One. And there are lots of different ways that we do that. Let me, I want to just go through a few of them. This is, you will have access to these slides, so that you can look at them. This is just a busy map that talks about some of the ways that we do things. In our, in the role as a navigator, what we try to do is make sure that we're making the connection as much as possible. And if you see here, there's a whole heck of a lot of different people that we could be collaborating with. I think one of the things that I want to say is that half of the navigator's position is actually doing clinical services. So it would be doing like mental health assessments or crisis assessments, individual counseling, family counseling, or running groups. That's half of what the navigator will do. The other half is really a lot of the triage of referrals and figuring out where, what's the next best step for this student? The student is presenting with some type of mental health problem. I don't want to say illness, you know, sometimes we're dealing with mental illness, but you know, there's a whole spectrum of what we could be dealing with. And so it's really looking at the student, talking to their family or to the teacher, whoever has made the referral, to find out what is the struggle. And again, finding that next best step. And we're really, what we try very hard, Dr. Wembiscus talked about being agnostic. I talk about not being proprietary, you know. So Cleveland Clinic administrators would probably not be happy with me, but we're not the natural referral source. You know, we make our decisions basically, you know, with having the support of the school district allows us to be kind of clinically responsible to the student and their families and figuring out where do they need to go next. You know, and like in Strongsville, that could be mindfully as opposed to a Cleveland Clinic counselor. And that's, that's not a problem for our program. I'm going to give you a little bit of numbers about what is, has happened in Lakewood, just as an example. So if you look here, we get about 50% of our referrals from the school staff. 16, if you add, I think I combined, you look down at the bottom, I guess I didn't combine all the, you know, family is about 16, 17%. We get referrals from community counselors. In Lakewood, we work with both Ohio Guidestone and Belfair, and they provide a fair amount of referrals to us. But then we work collaboratively. Just for an instance, several of the Belfair counselors, they see the student. I work with the parents. And so, and then we work as a team to help that family system. We do get some referrals from both the people, Central Intake is the people in the Cleveland Clinic emergency rooms who assess students for admissions. So sometimes we're the diversion, that they don't have to go to the hospital. And the real advantage to that is that the student who's struggling, who ends up in the emergency room, is probably struggling in school, too. And then they go to school, if they're hospitalized, if they miss school for five days, they're further behind. And so instead of helping the problem, sometimes we've made it worse. So we try to divert when we can, when it's appropriate. Let's see. And I also want to show that we're housed in the high school, so I think that creates a natural piece that they know us a little bit better than the other schools. But we try to make it a point to get into the other schools as well. We rewrote our MOU for Lakewood last summer to get some permission to be in spaces at the schools. So if there's a crisis that occurs at one of the elementary schools, you know, we can respond and go to the elementary school as opposed to in years past where they had to come to our office at the high school. But if you look here, we do get, you know, 22% from elementary schools, 19% from middle schools, and then 54%. Franklin is the Lakewood City Schools Alternative School. And then there are a couple other, there's a couple alternative schools that work with the district. And Lakewood actually has a preschool who we received one referral from. So we don't really want, and we want to serve preschool kids, but we hope we don't have to get a referral, so. Let's see. And this is just a breakdown, it's a crude breakdown of some of the services that the navigator does. Care coordination is a big one, and that's, you get, the navigator gets the referral and contacts the family, contacts the school, contacts the primary care doctor, talks with the psychiatrist, and tries to help bring the team together, do a lot of assessments to when the student is referred to the program, and we feel like, you know, there's something that maybe referring them right on is not the right answer. We need to figure out a little bit more and help them figure out what's going on. We have found, in the five years that I've been doing this, that we get, sometimes we get more bang for our buck if we help the family than if we just do direct service to the client. In fact, there are two programs that we're getting training in through Yale that I actually identified that working with the family, per their research, is more impactful than working directly with the students. So we're trying to figure out, how do we do this most efficiently and effectively? Let's see. So I'm going to stop here, and we can answer any questions if anybody has any.
I have one, although I've heard all of this and seen it. This is for Andy, really, because he's in it here. How would this make a difference? Like you, you coordinate, you do it, you see what's needed. How, how could this help you and the people under you?
That's a great question. The first thought I have with that is when Dr. Wembiscus had the slide up kind of with the blue boxes of how the pathway to give care for students who are in need. And that really resonated with me because what really does happen is that pathway of emergency room, hospital, immediate coordination, discharge, transitional care. It's really hard for the school district to do that efficiently, do it timely, do it well, because we don't have access to the same resources and pathways of communication that the Cleveland Clinic would. And so the fact that you can knock out half of that and get a kid the time and that they, the treatment that they need or the support they need in a more timely fashion, I think is huge. So that's the first thing that comes to mind.
And I guess I'll jump in there. And one of the things that I sometimes call myself is the Hospital Diversion Officer, so that if we can divert a student from having to go inpatient, you know, that we try to do that.
Can one of you speak to the success that you've seen in Lakewood with helping teachers understand? I feel like for me as a parent, that is one of my challenges, and I'm wondering, maybe because it's a medical professional, that that changes the perspective.
I love, I love that question, thank you, and I love that work. So a big piece, you know, if you just sort of look at building the team, a big piece, and one of, you know, sort of one of my mentors said that when you get the chance to talk with a teacher, they don't have 10 minutes. They have maybe 30 seconds, and you need to be ready to provide very concrete supports and guidance and information because they're going right back into a classroom. And so I think a piece that has been most effective is not just the, I'm not going to go like a data dump, right? We have lots of professional development, it's one time, but it's the continuity of those relationships and the shared learning. And so one of the most important pieces, and we think about this in medicine, too, because it's the training model of mentorship, right? So you're working, you know, it's sort of like a trade, right? You're learning from somebody else. But within the shared space of education, healthcare, we're learning from each other in those weekly care coordination sessions. So the chance, when Mike is able to go down to the intervention classroom or one of the other units, or even just work with a general education teacher quickly, we can see improvements for the kids who we are working with struggling, but we also will do indirect consultation, right? So that might be, we don't necessarily have HIPAA/FERPA compliance to talk, but we might have a general question. Or there might be someone that I want to have de-identified. The teacher may say, "This is de-identified, but I need to ask some guidance on what to do next and how to best support." So those are things that we're able to do onsite over time in addition to the professional development and kind of the drop-in information sessions. We also do, you know, we, Mike has worked a lot with the C-STAG and helping with, you know, some of the other interventions that are nationally, like Youth Mental Health First Aid. There's a, there's a lot of programs that are information sharing, but then some of the at-work programs of skill building, like working on the C-STAG or the crisis interventions, can be really valuable, especially if you know you have other mental health professionals to support you when things do get really difficult. I did, I did just want to mention the, I said I wouldn't talk about the funding piece, but I think that is important after listening to everything and also having served on the board in the past. So braided funding is really how we think about our program. So we have billable services, and one of the reasons that our program can be sustainable is because we're able to seek third-party billing for our clinical services. And then we have philanthropic support, and each community has different philanthropic opportunities. And then we've received some grants, so we, right now we have a grant from Sam, so that's not, Strongsville is not within that region, but we receive grants. And then the district support kind of holds things steady.
So going a little further on that, the partnership, if we go forward with the partnership with the program and MOU would be developed that details the specifics of that, the board would consider that MOU, and then if and when they do that, how, what would be the timeline for you to find our coordinator for our district?
So the hiring, so we'd have to develop a position specifically for the district, and then we'd have to move through our HR chain, and then we'd have to put out the request and do interviewing. That's, the last Patient Navigator we hired was maybe a three to six-month process. We, we have templates, but that's something to think about and to discuss.
Yeah, thank you.
And one of the things that I would say, Andy had asked me to talk about what happens in sort of downtime. I'm not sure what that means, because there's always more to do. I mean, you know, when we get a referral, one of the things that we want to do is follow up, too, so that when we have downtime, that's when we call a family that we touched base with a month ago or six, six weeks ago or something along those lines. But one of the other things that, just to specifically talk to your point, we gather data through a research tool called RedCap that Cleveland Clinic uses. And what, one of the things that we could do is also in that time as we build up is decide what are some of the outcomes that you would want to measure. And then we can build something so that we can actually give you that data. And I think that my going through this the first time, you know, I was just, I was building the plane as I was flying it. At this point in time, we'd be able to do a little bit better job of that, still a little bit of that, but more identifying what are some of the things that would indicate success for you guys and build in a way to measure that.
That's great, thank you.
I have another question. I'm looking at the Swiss cheese model. Can you give an example of the kinds of, if I'm understanding this correctly, kinds of failures that might line up to cause a problem in the end in this school kind of setting?
So if we, yeah, so there's some very tragic examples that are hard for me to talk about, but if we don't have the ability to talk to each other, we can lose kids.
So this is communication?
Mm-hmm. So the harm reduction model means that our warm handoffs from care provider to provider, whether it's a teacher, and parents are included in that. When it happens effectively, children receive the care that they need, and the communication is there, and the network is there. So someone could make a mistake, right? A prescription could be wrong. Someone might say something that really upsets a child who has OCD or who has self-harm. They may not know what they're saying. But as long as we have enough of those holes blocked, hopefully, we will not have the serious adverse outcomes that we have seen.
Thank you.
I'll just throw in one easy thing is, when students are hospitalized, it's, it does happen from time to time that then the student shows up back at school, and nobody ever knew that they were in the hospital. And so that's just one example of one of the places that we're trying to, you know, address.
I can understand the differentiation between your role and our school counselors. We have social workers now in our district, and social workers, you know, part of that is wraparound services and support. So how do you work, I can also understand the differences between your roles and social workers. So how can our social workers be more effective based on the partnership with this program?
First of all, I love your social workers. So we get closely with Celia and Kristin. Anybody else new or just those two? Yeah, I mean, you have, you have a huge district, and you have these two remarkable social workers, so I'm glad that's on camera. So I think one of the strengths is that social workers are stretched so thin, and they are managing extremely complicated situations, and not just mental health challenges. It might be significant social challenges or substance abuse challenges. And so the team is collaborative in supporting your, your district employees in those challenges. With our Virtual Access Clinic, with Celia and with Kristin, and sometimes they might just call because they say, "I have an indirect consultation. I just need to ask you some guidance because I don't actually know the next best step." And so we're able to talk about that and just put something in action pretty quickly. Mike works very, very closely with the school social worker, and the guidance counselors are tremendously effective because they are, they know the kids, even though they might have a caseload of 300 to 400 kids. But one other piece, the guidance counselors will say that they might spend half of a day on just one or two kids. But that might be, you know, three days out of the week. So it's very demanding, and so part of our role is better supporting the staff so that they can do the other parts of their job that they need to do. When we did our qualitative assessment, like it was a sort of an assessment on satisfaction of the program and collaboration, staff reported improved or less burnout when we have the chance, on both sides, when we have the chance to work closely together to support kids.
And one final question. So Mark, in your role, you're at Lakewood five days a week?
Yes.
Okay.
My office is actually in Lakewood High School, so. I'm there during the summer, and they're not.
I was there today, and I was in the halls, and I got to see my patients, and it's so much fun to be in a school when nobody's there. Kids love it, it's special. All right, well, thank you, unless there's any more questions? Okay.
Does anybody have any more questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate you taking the time to visit.
Thank you both for being here. We also have a discussion topic. I'm going to ask Steve Brechner to come to the podium. As you know, he's been working over the years to address and enhance our transportation department. And so wanted to give him the opportunity to give an update on his most recent project in this realm. So Steve?
I'm just surprised everyone left the room with this exciting topic.
It is.
On the docket. So yes, as Dr. Robb has stated, this has been one of the goals. When I came on board, our bus system was a bit antiquated. We've been able to, within the past six years, put cameras and video recording on the buses, which has helped immensely with student, everything from student issues to driver concerns, to parent concerns. And then we also have GPS on the buses, which helps also with some community concerns, you know, as far as speeding and things like that. Just the large volume of information that we're able to gather from those devices. So this is the next step in that plan of... So this is the next step in that plan of putting tablets on the bus. So what we're doing right now is equivalent to whenever I would take a trip with my dad, we'd go down to AAA and get the trip tick. And so I can see from the smiles, I'm not too, too, too far from that. So, you know, and, and as you would drive down to the bottom of the trip tick, you would, you would flip that page. That's essentially what our bus drivers are doing every day. They're getting printouts of any changes that are done on those routes on paper. If there's any substitutes, they, they have to go into that bus driver's mailbox and get that route sheet. You know, that, that route sheet is, is the, is the contract that day of getting those kids. Managing that has always been the task that all, all the managers, whether it's the assistant transportation director or the transportation director, they've always been up to it. But now it's, it's constant because there's, it seems like there's more transient populations, more people wanting transportation coming into the district, leaving the district. There's constant changes. So we're constantly printing and reprinting those pages. And also you have drivers driving down the road, not only trying to maintain discipline on the bus and maintaining a, an atmosphere that's of safety, also paying attention to the road in front of them, paying attention to all the other drivers driving defensively and reading off of a piece of paper of where exactly they're supposed to turn right and turn left. So that's the current state. What this would allow us to do most importantly is have a tablet that is mounted in a state-certified area, because there are rules that govern this. We, you know, we don't want to, that in any kind of area that would obscure any vision for any safety reasons or anything like that. It's a tablet that would be there and it would have turn-by-turn navigation, much like all of us are used to on our smartphones or if you don't have a smartphone, smartphone on the old Garmins, if everybody remembers those. But it would just replace that. The, the enhancement also is that if there's any last-minute changes that are needing to be made, those can be made instantaneously uploaded. And also, as we have a driver shortage that is nationally known, we also have days where whether or not there's field trips, whether or not there's, there's driver absence, a route may be split up in four different ways just to get the kids home in a reasonable amount of time. Now a driver would have at their fingertips the ability to get that route rather than either come back and pick up that route sheet and that section as it's been printed off for them during downtime. Or there have been, and it's been few and far between, but there have been instances where somebody's had to run the route sheet out to them at their location because they were unable to come back to the bus lot. So this technology would allow us to have information more readily available, information to the drivers, like I said, it's a step-by-step navigation that would tell them, turn right, turn left. Any changes that are made would be instantaneous. And then also any splitting of the routes would also be easier. If there's a bus that breaks down, we would also be able to accommodate that more quickly with this technology of switching that bus over and, and getting that out to parents. Additionally, I'm looking at a few different platforms. There is an attendance piece that could be incorporated into this where students would be able to, whether it's punching at a number, swiping a card, or quite simply just having their picture on the touchscreen and then they smack their face, so to speak, right on that tablet to say that they are, they're present on that bus. That kind of information would also be available to us. And that would alleviate some of the concerns of, you know, especially those first few weeks, students getting on the wrong bus before drivers get to see their faces and know them, you know, more readily. So that would also be an enhancement to that as, as well. So I, at this point, I, I think, and, and from conversations I've had with Dr. Raiba, I'm still getting some information from vendors. More or less, I, I, I'm just looking to see some, and then Dr. Raiba, some direction from the board, because this is a substantial investment at the outset. Currently, we are paying around $45,000 a year between our GPS services and our TransFinder, which is our routing services. The investment would, would be approximately that first year, you're buying the tablets, you're buying all the infrastructure, depending on the vendor we would go with, could be anywhere between $150,000 to $160,000 the first year. And then after that, to maintain the tablet software, the routing software and the GPS would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $55,000 to $60,000 to give you a rough ballpark. Again, those are just ballpark numbers. Before, I would come to the board, if you, if you want me to continue along this path, I would hash out those numbers with the vendors and get those to you and broker the best deal for the district and the best bang for the buck and return for an investment in any other, in any other criteria that you guys wish to, to give me as, as I, I try to endeavor to do all the time.
So I know Steve has shared, and I've shared with the board, two vendors that we've looked at already. We found out today that there's a third vendor and it's actually one of our current vendors. That's changed their approach to this. That would be advantageous of us to take a look at. So that's why we want to give a little more time to, to dig into that, to look at that as a third option. But, you know, that's, as Steve said, just to reiterate, it does have a hefty price tag. He's explained the, the positives of what this could be. So if you would like Steve to continue exploring, looking at the vendors, and then ultimately coming back to the board with a recommendation as to which vendor and which product to go forward with, he'll continue to do that work. If the direction is, hey, it's a great idea, but maybe not right now, we need that as well.
I said two quick questions. Do you feel like the drivers are on board with this, that they would be supportive? And I know I've heard from at least two that would be extremely happy, but do you feel like the majority of them?
I, I feel like they would be very supportive. I also feel like we would have to be very supportive of a few who would not be so supportive.
Right.
Just because it's technology. You know, given some of the demographics within the department, there's, there's resistance to some change, especially when it comes to technology. But I, I know through training and support, we would, we would be fine. But I would say for the majority, they would welcome the technology.
Okay, great. And my second question was, and you may not know off the top of your head, but the lifespan of the tablets? Like if we make that initial investment, like how long will those tablets normally last?
It would be a five-year under the, under the, under the one vendor that I have a three-year investment with the other that I have that has a few different options. So anywhere between three to five years for, I'm not saying that's the life of the tablet, but that's the life of the software that would be proprietary on the tablet. And if we went with another vendor, I would almost guarantee with tablets coming out, I think every six months they renew, we would, we would then have to get a new tablet whenever this current agreement would be up. I, I, I don't see something where our tablets are going to last 10, 10 years or anything like that, unfortunately.
Thank you.
So every five years would kind of be then the reinvestment?
Correct. I, I, that's just my assumption. I may be able to broker something when it comes to the five years to say, hey, we've been with you for five years, we've been paying this cost. Is there any kind of break that we can get on the tablets? But I would just assume with every new renewal, we would need to do that hardware investment, just how technology is developing.
This would replace Here Comes the Bus?
It depends on what vendor we go with. If we stay with our current vendor, it would not. But if we go with another vendor, it's a program called Wayfinder, it would, it would, oh, I'm sorry, that's Stop Finder, my apologies, which would be very similar to what the parents are used to with Here Comes the Bus.
So, I mean, I'm looking at, you said currently we're spending about $45,000 a year. And I'm assuming that's for Here Comes the Bus? Or is that for something else?
That's Here Comes the Bus and our routing software and GPS diagnostics, everything all, that's the whole package of the tech that we've put on the buses.
I'm just trying to make sure we understand shifting the coconuts, right? So we're going to take $45,000, we're going to replace it with $60,000?
Correct.
Approximately.
Correct.
In addition to a, a hardware or infrastructure investment of $150,000.
Correct.
So if we take a five-year on that, we're looking at $30,000 a year. So we're looking at rough number, current, current cat, current expense of $45,000 and we're looking at $90,000.
Correct.
Averaging it out. Do you have any idea how much we're spending on the route book process? And would we, would we have an efficiency there? Or are we just switching to it's now online?
I mean, if you're, you know, it'd be the cost of pencils, the cost of paper, the cost of ink. So it, it's.
I'm looking at people's time.
Well, and people's time. I mean, I.
But that's where I.
I didn't put that, I haven't put that together to say how many hours we're spending in a week and how that equates. I think that, you know, if we don't make this investment this round, if that's the board's decision, it's just truly kicking it down the curb. We, we are going to need this technology sooner rather than later. The current way that we're doing it with all the changes that are happening and, and the demand of parents to have changes faster, I think the technology is going to have to be installed sooner rather than later. So the question becomes, do we, do we do it now? Or do we wait and then we're forced to do it in a few years?
I would also add to the conversation, we just had this conversation with some transportation employees recently of the fact that if you take a look at, Steve mentioned the demographic, because it's a split shift, right? The demographic tends to be retirees. And when you take a look at that, retirees, as you get older, there's some more health needs that you have and things of that nature. So we've had greater needs for substitutes. And so if we take a look at, maybe the bus driver that's been employee for Maureen, 45 years, coming up on 45 years, and other employees that have been there for a while, yeah, they could take a look at the route sheet and probably know the route and know the city pretty well. But Jenny and Steve, wouldn't you say that the reliance on substitutes to do our routes, as well as the board has given us the green light to have floaters that take different routes every day? The ability to have the security that I'm having a tablet talk to me and kind of say, turn right, turn left, versus having to look at a sheet of paper? They're still driving safely. I want everybody to be aware of that. It's still safe driving and they're looking when appropriate. But I think that helps out current challenges that we're having with increased substitutes, increased floaters taking different routes, having to combine routes, as Steve said. It, it addresses needs, it addresses absences and, and those that are subbing, as well as field trips and a variety of other things.
And Steve, if there are last-minute changes, you know, say, I mean, there's changes all the time in terms of students and drop-off sites and all of those things, would those be immediately entered? And so if I picked up the route, they would be there for the driver to see?
It depends on the system that we would go with.
Okay.
It is always there within 24 hours.
Right. And I would, I would argue that sometimes those route books aren't always kept, you know, again, no fault, but there's always changes and they're getting something and they don't know they're going to be absent. It's like a seating chart, you know, they get, they don't get updated regularly. And so I think that this would help with that.
Mm-hmm.
What's the consequence? Kids stuck on a bus? Kids show up at the bus, at the bus office?
As far as if we don't have this system?
When we, when we don't update rapidly? Does that mean a kid ends up at the bus, at the bus depot?
I think, I think sometimes when there are changes, like I've seen drivers having the papers and trying to figure it out and then the bus is leaving a little bit later out of the building, which causes them to arrive home later. I mean, trying to figure all that out or, hey, come back, I've got your route sheet for you, you need to update it. So, I mean, there has been, there have been a handful of instances where, you know, a student is on the bus and they're, they're always in communication with us and we're always figuring it out. But I wouldn't say that happens all that often. It's just maybe a delay in, in when they get, get home.
And I would say, I mean, I'm guessing, right? But in practice, it probably would be a hybrid approach to say, if I've got a change this day in this afternoon, I'm still going to give, communicate with somebody and put it in their mailbox and do the things that we practically have to do. But the idea that then, in the next day, I don't have to keep that sheet of paper or pay attention that it's in the system, that would just be my assumption as to how it could work in practice.
And I, I do want to throw in there that we also have more time restrictions put on us by the state and its mandates that we've never had before. We've been able to navigate those because we've been able to retain a good, not only quality of driver, but quantity of driver. But as we have more drivers retire, we're going to have, we're, we're going to have a need for a system that's more efficient than what we're doing right now, given all those time constraints from the state, from the state and everything else that we've discussed.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one, Steve. I know we have trouble because we're fighting for the same pool of drivers attracting new ones. Does the fact that we don't have this and so many other districts do, does that send people kind of away from us? Does it, will this impact our ability to hire?
I, I, my initial reaction to that would be no. I, I don't, I don't think anyone's looking at us saying, I'm not going to go there because they don't have tablets. I think there's other things of consideration that are, you know, a little bit more obvious of, you know, salary benefits, things like that. However, this could be something to signify of, you know, we are moving forward rather than we're behind the curve.
I think you have a direction to continue to investigate. You said the third vendor is the third vendor, Here Comes the Bus?
Yeah, so what it is, is TransFinder is actually who we have our routing system through. They have a standalone system that, that I quoted you. They have a partnership with another GPS company called Zonar. Excuse me. And then today, Senovia, formerly known as Senovia, now known as CalAmp, they've entered this space as well with tablets. So there's three different quotes that I'm leveraging against one another. Two are from TransFinder with a third partner and then the other ones with CalAmp, Senovia. And those are the, those are the, the main players that I'm, I'm trying to navigate their proposals and compare apples to apples with.
I would think that you have the consensus of the board to continue to negotiate.
Okay.
Just to be pithy, if we do get this and somebody still wants paper, too bad. I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we want to hear, you know, we'll still print stuff or we'll have employees, well, I would prefer a book.
Right.
Like, this is it. I can't, I can't imagine us making this kind of investment and then still printing anything. So, but let's investigate it. And the only other thing, I, I read your report. I would, I'm, I'm, I'm reticent to give up some of the positive features we have with the current reporting system. So I think.
As far as the GPS, you mean?
The GPS and all of that.
Correct.
Information. I would, I, to me, the solution would be a step backward. And that, it would be a reason to say, you know what? Until you can bring us a full package, we'll be patient.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. A couple other items under my report. Under number three, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that in compliance with the Ohio revised code, the following dates be approved as contingency in the event that days must be made up as a result of weather or other calamity. And those dates are the first full week after the school year ends. So I can say for the 12 years I've been at Central Office, we've never had to use them. And then another note, we used to approve Blizzard bags every year. We no longer need to do that. We've worked throughout the year and it's extended the half-day kindergarten and half-day preschool times by five minutes, which should give us plenty of time to have a buffer. So those are there if we need them. But that and Blizzard bags would, our Blizzard bags are no longer needed. Moving on to item four, be resolved upon my recommendation that the administrative handbook adopted for the period of August 1st, 2022, through July 31st, 2025 be revised and that the Board of Education approves the updated version, and this requires a vote.
Do I have a motion?
No, moved.
Second? Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Bissell. Any discussion?
Just to give an update on, on the changes. So we've done some administrative reorganization. So the first thing we had to do was update the administrative position titles to match what will be in practice starting in the '24, '25 school year. So that's, that's been done in the recognition clause as well as in the last year of the salary grid to reflect those positions accordingly. The second thing that is a change that's there is I adjusted some of the language in terms of how contracts are awarded in our district, giving more flexibility to me as superintendent to award different types of, different durations of contracts after the second full contract that administrators have had in the district. After that, I've updated some of the retiree hire language. So in the past, due to administrative absences or leaves, we've had to use administrators that have been retired. Right now, the way the language is written addresses those retiree hire employees that come and support us for less than a full school year, although we haven't had to use it in many years. Although we haven't had to use it in many years, there is a difference in terms of what we would do if somebody was here for the full year. So the updated language just addresses the carve-outs for administrators that would be with us for a full year versus those that would come in for a partial period of time. The next change addresses performance level designations for our administrative team. There was a, a section that is in our leadership handbook, which the board will consider next, that was not a part of our administrative handbook and to create equity between both of them, that address how we compensate employees when they've reached the top of the salary scale. That was added as we are now having administrators reach the top of our salary schedule due to their longevity with the district. So this mirrors language that's in our leadership handbook. And I believe those memorialize all the changes that are under consideration.
Anyone has any other questions? Take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Abstain.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Housen?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Next?
Under number five, be resolved upon my recommendation that the leadership handbook adopted for the period of August 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2025 be revised, and that the Board of Education approves the updated version, and this also requires a vote.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs., Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Bissell. Any discussion? Want to rinse, wash, and repeat?
This one just does title changes. So one of our new administrative positions could either be in the administrative handbook or the leadership handbook, depending on their certification. So this is just simply updating our position titles as well as reflecting that in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year salary schedule. And that's it for this one.
Any other questions? Please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Abstain.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Housen?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
With that, I'll move on to our business services report for the month. Steve?
All right, good evening again. There's three items for your consideration in this section. The first one is district insurance. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the operations manager be authorized to purchase property, inland marine boiler and machinery, crime, automobile, general liability, and umbrella insurance from Liberty Mutual Insurance Company and the agent is Todd Associates Incorporated and Alara Group Company as endorsed by the Ohio State, sorry, Ohio Schools Council at a one-year contract price not to exceed $509,860.60 for the period of July 1, 2024 through July 1, 2025, which includes all school, school groups. Last year's cost was $459,433.60. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education recognizes the following groups, has authorized school groups, and there in Strongsville City Schools insurance policy, those groups include Strongsville Council of PTA, Strongsville High School PTA, Strongsville Middle School PTA, Chapman Elementary School PTA, Kinsner Elementary School PTA, Maraski Elementary School PTA, Surarr Elementary School PTA, Whitney Elementary School PTA, Strongsville Early Learning Preschool PTA, Strongsville Early Childhood Preschool PTA, After Prom Committee, Strongsville Booster Club, Athletic, Strongsville Hockey Association, Strongsville Music Boosters Choral Division, and Strongsville Music Boosters Instrumental Division. The second item is be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the monthly school resource officer reimbursement be approved per the exhibit attached. And the third item is be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following gifts be approved. Mrs. Marge Tabellion made several donations totaling $900 in memory of Mike Tabellion, grandfather of Strongsville High School 2024 graduate Lily Vassal. These donations are to be used for orchestra and symphony. Also, Strongsville Donato's Pizza donated ten percent of sales collected on eight dates from September 2023 through April 2024 to each district elementary school in the following amounts. Chapman Elementary School, $305. Kinsner Elementary, $140. Maraski Elementary, $260. Surarr Elementary, $244. And Whitney Elementary, $191 for a total over those schools of $1,086.
Any questions for Steve?
Do you have any update on tar?
On tar?
Paving?
Um, the middle school track was finished. It's yet to be striped. The high school is, as of today, we're three quarters of the way through, if not all the way through. I'm sorry, I was locked in a, in a room all day today. Did it rain at all today?
No, it didn't.
So it should, it should be completed, if not almost finished. The whole high school campus should be resurfaced at this point in time.
Yeah.
The striping will be done by a, a company at a later time for the parking. But all the resurfacing went very well. And ahead of, of a schedule, we're not in July yet. So usually we're scrambling in July to figure out how we're going to do all our activities. So we were able to fit into the schedules very well this year and get everything completed.
The school lot looks nice, the high school school lot. I was able to drive by it today. So it looks nice. We'll look forward to the striping and all the other fun.
And all the directional arrows and, and everything else. Right now, we're just going to enjoy the blank canvas of just a nicely sealed parking lot.
The cars were all parked mishmash. We've got to get those, get those lines up there.
I will say, I was at the high school, I was at the high school this morning and the lines were, they're in the front parking lot and they were working on the lines by the media center.
And they, they're very efficient. It should be done by the end of the week. There'll be some extras that we have to do that we've done internally. But I'm very happy that this is all done before any camps begin in earnest. Those are usually phone calls that I get. So we're able to get those done and, and thank you for asking.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we'll bring Erin up for the curriculum report for the month.
Good evening. Five items tonight for your consideration. Item one, it says out of state trip. It's actually an overnight trip, if you want to make that correction, George. So it's an overnight trip for the Strongsville High School Girls Varsity and Junior Varsity Soccer Teams. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that permission be granted to the Strongsville High School Girls Varsity and Junior Varsity Soccer Teams to travel to Toledo, Ohio to participate in soccer competition August 30th through 31st of 2024. Transportation via school bus, lodging and meals will be paid by participating students and with the proceeds from the GSOC boosters.
Toledo sometimes is considered out of state. Or out of the world.
Occasionally, yes. Item two is an out of state trip. And this is again for the Girls Varsity Soccer Team. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, permission be granted for the Girls Varsity Soccer Team to travel to Albany, New York to participate in a soccer competition. This is October 10th through the 13th, 2024. Transportation via chartered motor coach, lodging and meals paid by participating students and with proceeds from the Strongsville Girls National Soccer Showcase as well as booster funds. Item three, we have a student teacher placement. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following student teacher be placed. And this will be a student placed at Strongsville Middle School from January 13th through May 2nd of 2025. And this is a student at Baldwin Wallace University. Item four, we have textbooks for College Credit Plus. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Strongsville City School District pays for textbooks for students that are participating in our College Credit Plus program through Cuyahoga Community College at an approximate cost of $35,000 for the 2024, 2025 school year. And lastly, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an interpreting services agreement with Cross-Thread Solutions LLC for interpreting students for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. And this is for our English learner students who need translators in any capacity.
Questions for Erin? Next, Andy will come up for the student service report.
Good evening, members of the board. I have about eight items, I think, for you tonight. The first is Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio. Be it reserved, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with the Education Service Center of Northeast Ohio to implement positive education program services for the 2024, 2025 school year. Number two is United Cerebral Palsy Association of Greater Cleveland. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with United Cerebral Palsy Association of Greater Cleveland Incorporated for the special education and related services for placement of a student with disabilities in the amount of $85,050 for the nine-month program during the 2024, 2025 school year and $9,450 for the fiscal year 25 extended school year. Item number three is PSI affiliates. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with PSI affiliates in the amount of $5,600 for kindergarten registration and vision and hearing screenings for the 2024, 2025 school year. Number four, PSI affiliates. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with PSI affiliates for nursing and health services for the 2024, 25 school year in the amount of three, $399,528. The school year 2025, 26 school year in the amount of $419,504.40 and in the 2026, 27 school year in the amount of $440,479.62. Number five, Cleveland Clinic Learner School for Autism. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with Cleveland Clinic Children's Hospital for Rehabilitation on behalf of its Learner School for Autism for a student with disabilities for the 2024, 25 school year. Number six is Cleveland Clinic Learner School for Autism. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with Cleveland Clinic Children's Hospital for Rehabilitation on behalf of its Learner School for Autism for a student with disabilities for the 2025, 24, 25 school year. Number seven is Cleveland Clinic Learner School for Autism. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with Cleveland Clinic Children's Hospital for Rehabilitation on behalf of its Learner School for Autism for a student with disabilities for the 2024, 25 school year. And lastly, number eight, Solutions Behavioral Consulting. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with Solutions Behavioral Consulting for the 2024, 2025 school year, including an extended school year to provide consultation for students and consultation and training for staff in the area of behavioral intervention services. And that concludes my report.
Questions for Andy?
Dr. Ryan, before you move on, I had one other, it doesn't, oh, your section name. Sorry, I had one correction under business services that I just wanted to document for the minutes. Under gifts, direct for Donato's Pizza under Maraski, it listed 260. It should have been 206. So I just made that change, just wanted to reflect it for the minutes.
Thanks, George. Next, I'll turn it over to Jenny for the human resource report.
Thank you. I have the following items for your consideration this evening. Under number one, we have the resignation of a certificated staff. And George, I don't know if it matters. It says it in the action, but it says certificate instead of certificated. Then we forgot the D in the subject line.
I'll change it.
Yeah, thanks. Under two, we have the appointments for administrative staff. Under three, appointment for leadership. And I do believe this requires a vote.
Yes. If you want to read the resolution, Jenny, then-
Sure. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following leadership personnel be hired. Ryan Cobain for Human Resources Coordinator for a two-year, 260-day contract salary to be at base at $94,224 per year effective August 1st. Additionally, up to five days of transition at the per diem rate to be worked in July 2024. And this is a new position.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Bissell. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Abstain.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under four, appointments for certificated staff. Five, appointments for summer learning intervention specialists. Under six, changes in status for non-certificated staff. Under seven, we have one job share at Chapman Elementary for next year. Under eight, stipend for our resident educator coordinator. Under nine, stipends for our webmasters. Under 10, leave of absence for non-certificated staff. Eleven, our unpaid leaves for non-certificated staff. Twelve, there is a resolution establishing educational requirements for substitute teachers. This does require a vote. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves a resolution establishing educational requirements for substitute teachers for the 2024, 2025 school year and each year thereafter, as stated in the exhibit.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Cobain. Do you want to give us the background?
Sure. So during COVID, I believe it started, where we were allowed by the state to have a little bit more substitute flexibility. So in the past, our substitutes required to have, were required to have a bachelor's degree in order to sub for us as a district. So in the last few years, and each year, the, the state has allowed us to continue a practice of, you know, a kind of eliminating that requirement, which really has allowed us to bring in more substitutes, qualified substitutes still. But it's lessening that, that strict guideline of having your bachelor's degree. And so we are now required to adopt our own regulations and these are things that we've been following for the last couple of years. So we want individuals who are at least 21 years or older and, and making sure they have graduated high school or high school equivalents. And so that is one piece. They have to meet one of these following requirements. The other caveat is an individual enrolled in college that which, who, who has completed an equivalent of at least two years of full-time college courses. They must be in their junior year above and is pursuing a bachelor's degree in education. So what this has done is allowed some of our college students to come home over the holidays and even in the summer and, and become substitutes for us and get some experience with our, our teachers, keeping a close eye on them. And then finally, any current coaches that are employed by the board and possess a pupil activity permit as issued by the State Board of Education. So those would be, they have to meet one of those requirements to sub for us. Also, we want them to have prior experience working with kids and obviously good moral character. They need to fulfill a background check, complete background check through BCI with us. And, you know, from, with that, we would, we'll be permitted to hire a little bit, have more flexibility in terms of who we hire to substitute.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. Under 13, we have one revision. It is due to the retirement date of Tina Peters. We had a change in the date and it is effective end of day of June 30th. And finally, under four, we have a memorandum of understanding. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Strongsville Education Association, as stated in the exhibit, be accepted.
Questions for Jenny?
How's hiring going?
Well, it's been a very busy June, busy, busy actually since March, but really busy in June. But I think we're almost there. So there's a few ancillary positions we're still looking for. You know, when we, we hire from within, we have some openings that occur. So some of those are happening right now. But all in all, done a phenomenal job. Our interview teams have done a phenomenal job and just excited and thrilled to have the quality candidates that we're getting for next year. And I think we're, I, I kind of lost count, but I, last time I counted, we were almost at 50 new hires. So it's been a busy, busy spring.
I think anecdotally, a lot of times we talk about having trouble hiring people. Are we still able to get more applications for open positions? Or are we having trouble filling certain positions?
It just depends. I would say, you know, overall, we, we do get a quality number of candidates that do apply. apply. And, and, you know, I think it was refreshing as we interview these candidates, they want to be in Strongsville. They want to work for our district. They hear great things about what we do, so that's refreshing. You know, I think right now I have an art slash tech position, so that's been a real challenge, trying to find somebody with that dual licensure. You know, I think high school comprehensive science was, was a little challenging to find. We're not getting as many quality candidates for that, but other than that, we're doing pretty well.
Congratulations. I'm sure you're looking forward to the season being over. We're always, we're always hiring.
Yes.
Finally, we do have one item under technology. Be resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education approves entering into a two-year contract for the purchase of breakout EDU software for Strongsville Middle School and the High School. Covers a range of subjects and assessment, digital citizenship and social emotional learning. The cost after discounts over the two-year contract is $5,996. That concludes the technology report and my report, unless there's any other follow-up questions.
Any questions for Cameron? Hearing none. Report on Polaris Career Center? Polaris Career Center, Mrs. Bissel.
Yes, just two quick things to mention right now. Polaris had a very successful camp discovery, so that's for students rising sixth through eighth graders that can get exposed to Polaris before they have the opportunity to enroll in the programs full-time. That took place June 10 through 13, and it was fantastic. Highest enrollment they've seen before. Students had a great time. Parents got to come the last day and observe, and then also take a tour of the facility, which many of them took advantage of. So my kids are already lining up what they want to do next year. It's a great experience. If you have kids in that age range, make sure to put that on your radar. And the other thing of note is that on Tuesday, August 13th, at 6:30, we have our regular Polaris Board meeting, but before that, we will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony to open the, officially open the new LPN space for the adult program that's partnering with Southwest. So it is finished. They were putting in trim this week, and that will be ready for us to see, and I'm sure you'll be able to find some media press coverage about that when it happens. So otherwise, it's a, it's a quieter time of year. Polaris, they are also hiring, but it's not nearly as big in terms of demand on employees. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Michelle. For legislation, the legislature went on break, so hopefully they'll be able to cause as little mischief as possible. Before they did go on break, they did pass a number of new laws or legislation that now go to the governor's desk. So many, and literally yesterday and today, that we're all reviewing what was passed. So we'll have a more complete report next month. But they did, the state legislature did approve the $4.2 billion capital budget and earmarked, earmarked about $600 million for school construction, which I'm sure Strongsville will get in line and wait till next year. So that completes my legislation report. Next is city council report. Please, please, Mrs. Hauser, say you have a report.
Yes, at this week's city council meeting, the mayor recognized the Strongsville Community Emergency Response Team. It was a large group of volunteers who, you will see them in their green t-shirts at the Ribburnoff, at Home Days. They did an exceptional volunteerism award for Dale Hawk, an exceptional leadership award for Dawn Road. So the mayor was very pleased with, again, their volunteerism and their readiness to respond to any emergencies in the community. Also, the annual Fourth of July fireworks show will take place at dusk on the Commons at the corner of Pearl and Royalton Road. The display will be preceded by a family festival on the Commons with inflatables, balloons, artists, face painters, and food trucks, and the Kona Ice Truck. The event is sponsored by the Strongsville Rec Center and runs from 6:00 to 9:00 PM with the fireworks following. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Laura? Strongsville Education Foundation?
Uh, their last meeting was June 13th. As of last year, they gave $20,000 in field trips for all of the schools, which is great. $41,000 in grants this year total. 18 out of 27 grants have been approved. Kim Scott, who is a math coach in sixth to 12th grade, came and talked. She wants to go with a group of teachers to the National Council of Teachers Mathematics. I think I'm saying that right. They want to implement, they're doing a lot of this in the, at the high school level, but they'd like to start really implementing it in the middle school level. So the Strongsville Education Group gave them, I think it was $2,576, so they could travel to Chicago. She came and talked about it and asked for the grant. And just to keep in the back of your mind, September 21st is Girls and Boys Soccer, and the SEF will be there, kind of giving prizes away and kind of letting people know, like, what they do and who they are. So that might be fun to look into. And same thing, November 23rd is their big fundraiser. I'd encourage people to go to their website. They, they're looking for sponsors, just buy a ticket. As you can see, they do like a lot of great work for us all year, so I hope we get out and support them. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Sharon. Next is Strongsville PTA.
PTA's on break for the summer, so we'll have a report.
So our report's on break also?
Correct. Yes.
Excellent. Uh, committee reports. Do we have a finance committee report?
No report at this time.
Policy committee?
Just that there's an upcoming meeting, July 16th, 2024, in the admin building at noon.
The excitement builds.
It sure does.
Uh, facilities committee, our next meeting is August 13th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the admin building. Business Advisory Council?
Next meeting to be announced.
Excellent. And we now come to the adoption of the consent calendar. Motion to, motion to, uh, motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented at this point in the agenda means that all items appearing in the agenda denoted as type-action consent are adopted by one single motion unless requested otherwise. I don't remember any, any modifications. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, please, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Cobain. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hauser?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
And the motion carries timely information. We're still on summer break. There should be none.
Just quick, just quick. We sent out in my last update, open house date, so we just wanted to make sure everybody caught that. We got feedback last year from our elementary parents that they, we went away for, for one year, the kind of open house before school to drop off materials. So based on that, we've gone back to that. So August 14th, Wednesday, all elementary schools and the preschool, we'll have an open house plus a drop off of your materials and other supplies. And then in the first couple of weeks of the school year, we'll have the high school and middle school have theirs. If you're looking for those, I hope you're not looking yet, but soon you'll be looking for school supplies. If you go to our website and under the Find and Fast menu on any of our buildings or district, you'll find your building's school supply list. And just as an FYI, Mr. Miko asked me a while ago, can we, everything we use in our district is SES Mustangs, right? And Strong, that is an old name we used from years ago. So we've updated in the background, so if you actually Google SESMustangs.org, it will take you to our website. And then I think August 1st will be the official changeover to where everything, emails, website address, will all be SES Mustangs to update that. So it'll still work in both ways, but just so you're aware. And then we know where the first days of school are at, and we'll talk more about those as we get closer. So the other thing that I would note, Mr. Tullone, congratulations, first of all, on staying this long. That's impressive. That's right. So, but one of the things, again, feedback we got last year was when we do schedule release for the secondary level. So we always do the same date at the elementary level where we let people know in the computer system, here's what your school, or your teacher will be. Mr. Wengler has been working with the middle school, will now work with Mr. Tullone. Mr. Wengler's our high school principal. And they will come together on a unified date where we will release all secondary schedules in Power School so parents can access them. We'll still do the, you know, come to the school, sixth grade, seventh grade, the stuff that we do, but that way everybody has access at the same time for the scheduling. So just as an FYI, and that concludes my timely information.
Can you bring the slide up again? So the middle school, the Serpentine Field is not, is the middle school field?
Middle school Serpentine, they're both Serpentine Field, but yeah, at the middle school.
When all our middle schoolers show up at the high school, Mr. Tullone will drive over there and pick them up. Board of Education, other? Do we have any others? I do have one. I wanted to give a shout-out. Behind the scenes, we have a bunch of students who work the cameras, so to speak. Sometimes they're at our board meetings, which is probably a punishment of one sort or another, but they work the cameras at our football games and our music events and our theater events and all the events around the district. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to last year's crew members, which is Dominic Ciati, Noah Ryder, Ved Landi, Madeline Roadheaver, Matt Wilkinson, Declan Binkley, and Aswath Madhan. And I'll also give a shout-out to our directors, Mrs. Kerr and Mr. Hammersley. And this is just a very nice way to lead into the announcement that if you would like to be part of our TV crew and work behind the scenes and learn what it's like to work with cameras and audio and all of that good stuff, we have some clinics coming up. Our second clinic will be on July 16th from 10:00 AM to noon at the high school auditorium. And then we have a third one, August 6th, from 10:00 AM to noon at Pat Catan Stadium. So if you like that kind of stuff, it's a great way to get involved and a great way to volunteer. And that's all the others I had. Last chance on others.
I will just add, my grandson went to the one the other day and loved it. So it's a great way and, and cheap labor. Can I say that?
I think, I think your grandson needs to negotiate with grandma for an increase in wages. But I will, I will say, you know, the, the testament is there. If you like streaming, if you like all of that stuff, the one thing I was going to highlight is, is all of the equipment we use is current, it's professional, it's modern. So if you ever wanted to learn how TV cameras or movie cameras or any of that stuff works, here's your chance to do it. Next on our agenda is meeting notification. We have a Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, July 9th, in this room at 7:00 PM. And then our annual board retreat is Tuesday, July 23rd, at 6:30 PM in this, in the meeting room in the admin building. We do have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee, to prepare for and review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, as well as to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Cobain. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hauser?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
We will enter into executive session at 9:35. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention and have a nice evening.